Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.
Very good, and I think we have approached the 7:00 PM switching hour. Actually, it is slightly after 7:00. Before the formal portion of our agenda, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Thank you for attending. It's June 15th, 2021. Want to hit record on the meeting? And to start off this council meeting, again, June 15th, 2021, City of Portland Common Council, before we officially open, we have a public hearing regarding parking on Hubbard Street. And the request has been to allow alternate side, odd even parking on Hubbard Street. We will declare the public hearing open, so it's officially open. If we have anybody present that would like to speak regarding on-street parking, potential for on-street parking on Hubbard Street, I'm going to ask you to acknowledge your desire in one of three ways. Give me a virtual wave. So if you're pretty handy with these things, you can put a hand up on your screen. Or you can wave your actual hand at me, if that's convenient. And third option would be in the chat, in the chat box, to please share your name. And tell me that you would like to speak. And we will be doing the same thing regarding public comments when it's time for public comment. Anybody present will have the opportunity to give me a heads up that you would like to speak either virtually, an actual hand wave, or putting your name forward in the chat. But the public hearing is officially open. Is there anybody present that would like to speak regarding odd even parking on Hubbard Streets, specific to Hubbard Street at this point? If you're here and you'd like to have comments during public comments, that'll be in a little bit. This is a public hearing specifically to overnight parking on Hubbard Street. And we're looking for public comments either in favor or opposed. And we do have some people who are still joining us. So we'll give you the opportunity. Just keep hitting. Admit, very healthy crowd here this evening. That's what happens when you get a cool rainy evening after a couple of very nice days of weather. Let's not be much on television. Let's go watch council. Second call. Anybody present? We have the public hearing to allow on-street parking on Hubbard Street. Is there anybody would like to speak towards this topic, either for or against? And we're going to give it a couple more seconds. And still not seeing any, but I will call last opportunity. Is there anybody present that would like to speak? And we're looking at overnight parking on Hubbard Street. Last call. Hearing none, seeing none. We will call this first public hearing officially closed. Second, we have two more public hearings. This one is to facilitate public input prior to submission of fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Applications. So this is a requirement for New York State. We're going to officially open the public hearing. Facilitating public input prior to submission of the fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Applications. And if you look down onto our agenda, there's information and there's information in the packet posted as well. Is there anybody present that would like to speak to this this evening? We have a council member. It seems to keep getting kicked out. Tom, that was not me. The internet is a fickle, fickle thing. So second call. Anybody present for our second agenda? Item regarding public hearings facilitating a public input prior to submission of fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Applications. Anybody present to speak to this? And third and last call. We are in our second of three public hearings. And we are soliciting for input. This is prior to the city's submission for fiscal year 21 CDBG applications. And hearing none, seeing none. We will call the second public hearing officially closed, and I will open our third. Oh, we got another person coming in. Third and final public hearing. This is also a required public hearing to facilitate public input prior to submission of a fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Application funded under the CARES Act. Public hearing is officially open. Looking and listening. Is there anybody present to speak to this? Second call. Like to give a minute. That way everybody does have the opportunity, just in case I don't see them. And third and final call. Anybody present that would like to speak? This is regarding public input prior to submission for the fiscal year 21 Community Development Block Grant Application funded under the CARES Act. All right. Hearing and seeing none. We will call it officially closed. And now we can call the meeting officially to order. And I'm going to try to, as usual. What I'd like to do is mute everybody. There we go. Everybody can unmute yourselves, but if you can all please rise, if you're able, to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. And public comments, if there is anybody present that would like to address mayor and council. We ask that public comments be limited to three minutes in length, that they are addressed to council as a whole, and deal with tasks or issues that the city of Portland can directly work on impact or influence. So if there is anybody present, you can either have your camera on, please give me a wave. If you would like to raise your hand virtually or put your name into the chat, send me a message. And I did see a hand there, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Timothy Thompson. Tim, if you are ready, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Thompson. I'm the coordinator of diversity and education at Tompkins Courtland Community College. And I'm the co-chair for the Courtland County Community of Color Group, formerly known as C4. I come to you with a reminder that this Saturday is going to be the first celebration of Juneteenth in Courtland County. Juneteenth is an African-American holiday celebrating the ending of slavery in the United States. This event will be an educational celebration that's co-sponsored by Tompkins Courtland Community College, SUNY Courtland, the city of Courtland, and our official entertainment sponsor is Courtland's own Fun Flicks. We'll have food, drinks, giveaways, and a series of speakers, including TC3's president, Dr. Orenthea Montague, SUNY Courtland's president, Dr. Eric Bitterbaum, and Courtland's own deputy mayor, Bruce Tyler. I trust and believe that the end of the slavery is something that we can all rally behind. So the C4 Committee welcomes everyone to join us this Saturday at 6:00, well, between 6:00 PM to 4:00 PM in the Courthouse Park to celebrate together.
Very good. Thank you, and it's been a pleasure working with you over the last couple of weeks to help make sure everything's where it should be being organized. And this being the first year that Juneteenth is officially recognized in New York State, very much looking forward to an educational and exciting opportunity to learn a little bit more. And I see Bud Deisher, William Deisher. If you're able to turn your microphone on, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, mayor and council. I know you have a long agenda tonight, so I just had a quick question. Now that stuff is opening back up and a lot of the things are being lifted, I was just curious if the council was going to start meeting in person again or continue doing Zooms?
Very good question, and something that council can address. And that will be up for council to discuss. And Bud, since I got you here, I've requested to join Back to Blue Courtland. I want to improve communication between the city and the group, so look forward to talking to you more about that.
Sounds good.
Very good. And Amy Bugs. Amy Bugs, if you're able to unmute, floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. Hi, council members. Amy Bugs, Director of Cuba Courtland Workforce Development Board. And I am here to make a public service announcement. I would like you to share with all of your constituents, if you would please. We are hosting a back-to-work career fair on Tuesday, June 22nd, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at SUNY Courtland Park Center. There will be 40 businesses there hiring from soup to nuts. I can't tell you exactly what all those positions are, but there's a lot of different openings, many of them full-time, many of them great positions that haven't been opened before. And I just want to encourage all of you to spread the word. I'm going to drop the flyer for the job fair in the chat box for the mayor to share with you via email that you can send out to your constituents if you don't mind getting the word out. We would just love to have all the job seekers that are out there and other folks that are looking for other employment to join us. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much, Amy. That's great. Employment opportunities. And is there anybody else present that would like the opportunity to address council this evening? Looking around. I believe we've addressed public comments. Next up, ward reports. Let's count down. Let's start up on the high end and see how confused everybody gets. We're going to start with Tom Michaels from the 8th Ward.
Good evening, everyone. Only one concern had popped up since our last meeting and disregarded some odors coming from our wastewater facility. And speaking with Bruce over there, that they're in in the middle of a maintenance issue that they're trying to get fixed. And I also took the opportunity last week to tour the facility to look at the items in question, and also Bruce wanted to show me the new misting system that they have in place, which is to use the mask odors that may permeate from the facility. And this is a system that takes a citrus concentrate and mixes it with air and injects it through four misters. And to me, it really did a great job of masking, even though, you know, since our facility upgrades, there's hardly any odors at all arriving from the facility. So to me, it's working. I think it's working quite well. And I don't know if Bruce is here tonight that can talk more about the new system or not, but certainly I entertain anyone to take time to look at this new change to our wastewater facility if they have time. But that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Bruce, would you like to touch upon that briefly?
Sure. And Tom, I very much appreciate your taking the time to come down to the plant. Yes, the misting system is our newest effort, and it does have a pleasant odor, but also supposedly it chemically neutralizes odorous compounds. The manufacturer's directions say when properly applied, you should smell neither the odor nor the product. But most people dose it so that you get a little bit of product because it does have a nice smell. We still are working on getting a full automation of the of the CHP generator so that we can make best utilization of the gas and also avoid situations where the gas pressure spikes and relieves through valves. So it's a process, but we're definitely making progress.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you, Tom.
Very good. Seventh Ward, that would be Troy Beckwith.
How are we doing? Just a couple of things, mayor. Just wondering if you could do to, I know Nick's busy at DPW, obviously he's not doing much in the city this summer, but we can get Brown City Hall cleaned up. You know, I'm a big advocate in the city about people and their lawns. There's a lot of lawns that we got to, I already called the code office, but I mean, come on, let's practice what we preach here, so. You want to do a community thing, maybe us ward people can get together and we'll come down and clean it up or whatever, but it won't take that much effort to clean up around City Hall. Most of you down there on the Clinton Ave there, you can see they're making some progress. They're doing a pretty good job other than Clinton Ave, but we're working on that. So other than that, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Troy. Sixth Ward, Bill Carpenter sends his regrets. See as a work obligation. So we'll go down to the fifth ward, Jackie Chapman.
Good evening. Not really a lot to report in the fifth ward right now, so. I pass.
Fourth Ward, John Bennett.
It's all quiet in the fourth.
Very good. Third Ward, Bruce Tyler.
Yeah, I agree. Sorry, I agree with Troy. Maybe we can devote a, direct a few more resources towards City Hall, and I think that'd be a good idea if we can do that. I also want to congratulate the folks that put the whole dairy parade together. It was a pretty popular event. I just know it seemed like, you know, you looked down all the way up Tompkins and up Main Street, and it was just, you know, bumper to bumper cars and the people were on the sidewalks, and I noticed several of our officers were out on the bikes. That was good to see. I hope we can have more of that going forward. And I'm looking forward to Juneteenth Day, and I just want to make one small. I am not the deputy mayor. That is, John Bennett is our deputy mayor, so I just want to clarify that. I will, I'm honored to be asked to speak at Juneteenth, but it'll be in my role as third ward councilperson. And other than that, things are looking pretty good. All our department heads, whenever I call them there, they always respond. And Nick, thanks to, for that help today with that concern we had on Graham Avenue. So that's it.
Thank you, Bruce. Second Ward, Katie Solomon.
I want to start by thanking my constituents and my fellow council members for their patience. I've been kind of AWOL for the past month. And many of you have noticed my fabulous, bald, beautiful hairdo. That's because I've been fighting lymphoma. And I seem to have won that fight, so that's good news. But on the other hand, we had a family crisis. Thank you, Brian. Not in my immediate family, but in my extended family that's required a lot of time and attention, and sadly, that family member is succumbing to his fight. So anyway. Thank you for your patience with me as I've been incomunicado. And I got a call from a constituent who wanted to know when the roads would be paved, so I'm hoping that Nick might touch on that in his infrastructure report. And also, people are expecting Pleasant Street to get curbs to help control water flow and also keep people from parking on the sidewalks. Another constituent called me and is against the parking on Hubbard Street, made the effort to call me specifically to speak out against that. And another constituent called concerned about a friend who has code violations, but is elderly and will not let anyone inside his house. So I'll be talking to codes about that. And that's it from the second ward. Thank you.
Very good, and that leads us to the first ward.
All right, thank you. Similar to Katie, I did hear from a resident who has concerns about the Hubbard Street parking moving forward, so that was something I'll share. And then leave in Yard Waste Collection has begun in the ward this week, so I want to say thank you to DPW. I saw the crews out there yesterday busily collecting materials that were at the curb, and some of those materials were piled pretty high from residents, so thanks for your work on that. Otherwise, it's been pretty quiet in the first ward.
Very good to hear. And mayor's report, like to have an executive session at the end to discuss contract negotiations with council. We do have a full agenda, so I'd like to move on to proclamations and have one of my, or part of my report as proclamation. So the first proclamation reads Arbor Day, but it's supposed to be Flag Day. I apologize for the typo. So Flag Day was yesterday, if you all follow along. Whereas, by the Act of Congress of the United States, June 14th of 1777, the first official flag of the United States was adopted. And by Act of Congress, on August 3rd of 1949, June 14th of each year, was designated as National Flag Day. And Congress has requested that the president issue annually a proclamation designating the week in which June 14th occurs as National Flag Week. So we might be a little, a couple hours late on Flag Day, but we are within Flag Week. And on December 8th of 1982, the National Flag Day Foundation was chartered to conduct educational programs and to encourage all Americans to pause for the pleasure of allegiance as part of National Flag Day ceremonies. And whereas Flag Day celebrates our nation's symbol of unity and stands for our country's devotion to freedom, the rule of law, and to equal rights of all. Now, therefore, I, Brian Tobin, Mayor for the City of Portland, hereby proclaim Monday, June 14th of 21 as Flag Day. And the week of June 14th as Flag Week in the City of Portland. And I encourage everybody to take a moment and recognize and appreciate the beauty that is our flag and what it represents. So what I'd like to talk to about with that was yesterday, the American Legion hosted once again another wonderful ceremony. It's been an annual occurrence with the exception of last year. And one of the things that happens on Flag Day, in addition to recognizing the flag, is the appropriate retirement of flags that have become tattered, worn, basically not appropriate to be used. And if you haven't been by the Legion down on Tompkins Street, when you go by, there is a mailbox out front, multicolored, red, white, and blue. And it's not for maids. It's for people to deposit their worn or used older flags. And the Legion, in conjunction with Yalz, and I believe the VFW did a wonderful job, a little bit of history, and then also officially retiring flags that have seen a useful and illustrious life. And I appreciate the efforts on everybody and the opportunity to say a couple of words. You know, one of the things I mentioned, the flag, it's a symbol that brings us together. And it's also another opportunity for us to appropriately recognize people who have sacrificed on behalf of all of us. And we talked about Memorial Day and the opportunity to recognize those who have given all. Veterans Day, people that have served in the armed forces. Flag Day, I think it's appropriate as well to talk about people who have sacrificed to help make America what it is today. And sinking home the point that our flag is a symbol of something that brings us together. And we as, not just people in Courtland or New York State, as Americans, have more in common than what takes us apart. And it's good to celebrate and recognize the things that bring us together. It was an outdoor ceremony, and it was very nice to see people, to smile, and a little rusty at the speeches. I'm sure people there would say so, but it was appropriate. Tom Michaels, can I put you on the spot? Have you been doing anything with the Restore American Pride?
Yes, I have. As a matter of fact, we had a meeting actually Monday night to discuss moving forward with this program. It's been in existence since, I believe, 2007, when I first started that program with a group of individuals, mostly made up of veterans. And veterans still take a vital contribution as well as a part in keeping the flags flying, flying on our main street. To break some history regarding the mailbox. I was instrumental in reaching out to a veteran that had connections that we were able to obtain a mailbox. And a group of employees at Paul Trinity took upon themselves to make a project to restore the mailbox to its, well, to its condition, but it needs to be refurbished again. So we're looking at anyone that may be interested in taking that upon themselves to make this another project. But yes, we, we actually received funds from our veterans groups, something that we decided was their best option years ago when we started this program. They're all individuals that take pride in the American flag and what it stands for, and and we continue to work with these groups. So that's basically all I have, that I'm certainly willing to answer any questions anyone might have.
Very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Michaels? I appreciate and thank you. And I know when you head down Main Street, if you've not been, there's a lot of fresh, new American flags flying, and very nice to see.
And we're also looking for donations as well to keep the program moving forward. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you, Tom. And the second proclamation I'd like to read is regards to June being National Pride Month. So whereas June is annually celebrated as Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall uprising. This took place on June 28th of 1969. There was a raid on the Stonewall Inn, a bar in Greenwich Village, New York City, that led to six days of protests and a lot of light shine shown on something that was happening that needed to be rectified. So this was considered the catalyst of the modern LGBTQ plus rights movement and to recognize the contributions that LGBTQ plus individuals have made to our society. And whereas over the past year, there has been what we can consider maybe a particularly complex time in civil rights and movements throughout our country. We think it's important to celebrate the United States Supreme Court ruling that helped to protect LGBTQ plus workers across the country from discrimination. Hundreds of thousands of Americans. And as we continue to recognize and appreciate our differences, we accept others for who they are. And whereas from day one, we continue to work in the city of Courtland to make an inclusive and equitable community, and we recognize that the differences that we have are strengths in our community. And whereas we are committed to becoming a leader in equality and inclusion, where people are not just tolerated, but empowered to thrive regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. Now, therefore, I, Brian Tobin, Mayor for the City of Courtland, hereby proclaim June of 2020 as Pride Month in the City of Courtland. And I encourage us all to reflect upon our history and envision our future and reaffirm our commitment to building a just and equitable society. So June is officially Pride Month, and thank you for listening as I read through two very important proclamations. listening as I read through two very important proclamations. Next up, minutes from our last meeting, that would have been way back in May. Motion to consider minutes from our last meeting. John Bennett, Second from Bruce Titler, are there any concerns regarding the minutes?
We have, uh, what about the minutes for the special meeting? Are they going to be next week or next month?
Uh, yep, we need another. We will have the minutes from the special meeting. That's what you're referring to.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have the minutes from the special meeting at our first meeting in July.
Okay, just checking.
Thank you for following.
Don't forget about them.
Oh, no. Hearing none, we can entertain him. We have the motion to file the minutes as is. All those in favor, do you say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed from council? Very good. Thank you. Like to move on. Agenda item number one, update on infrastructure work in the City of Portland. Nick Dovi, Superintendent of Public Works. Nick, how are you?
Not bad. Thanks, Brian. How's it going, everybody tonight? Just want to give you a little update on some of the project initiatives we have going on throughout the City of Portland. Uh, first off, all the information was recently posted, I think last week on the city website. This week, as some of you noted, it's brush collection week. Uh, we're also working on catch basin and manhole repairs on streets slated to be paved. I drafted a letter to let residents know when we're going to specifically be in their area. Uh, that will go out probably later this week for, for the individuals that will be impacted next week. Next week, looks like June 21st, we're starting the paving process on streets that were milled earlier in the year. We are starting on Franklin Street, then moving to Salisbury and tentatively to Plaza Drive. Um, after that, week of the 28th, we're looking at Wadsworth, Van Huseen, Floral and Pleasant. We just finished up patching the new curbs on Floral. Um, and we're also still kind of trying to catch up on patching some water, um, non copper connection service cuts. Uh, but that should be, be pretty much in the books by, by the beginning or mid of next week when we start to pave some of these streets. June 28th, we're looking at, um, I said that Wadsworth, Van Huseen, Floral, Pleasant, and then July 5th, we're going to use as a catch up week. Um, the only thing we've got on the docket on the 5th is Excelsior, but there's some storm sewer work that needs to be done on that street prior to paving. Uh, I know you're probably all wondering also about the streets that Sukoe was gonna undertake. Those have been pushed to a little later in the summer. Their plan still is to, their plan originally was to do Groton Ave and then come back and do Wheeler, Grant, some of Elm, uh, in the south end of Owego. Uh, but after further conversations with them and discussing their workload, that they basically want to come in and have two different crews. When they start milling, pave right basically behind themselves. So it should be a pretty quick turnaround on those streets. Uh, we will need to, I was kind of happy that they were going to put it off a little bit. Um, because as some of you have noticed, we've been on Groton Ave for about two or three weeks repairing the catch basins out there prior to them getting in and paving. Um, the other streets that I've outlined will be the same. Uh, we, they, Sukoe will not do the catch basin and DI work um, associated with the paving and milling. Uh, so we really need to get in there and, and take care of the sanitary manholes and the storm structures um, prior to them milling and then turning around and paving. The only streets that will be left open right now, the only street will be Delaware. That, we're waiting for school to get out. And there's a whole bunch of non copper connections that still need to be replaced uh, through the LSLRP program. Southside Drainage will be later this summer. I'll keep you posted on that uh, when we get some of these roads paved. Um, if anybody has any questions, I know that's a kind of a lot of information and I went kind of quick, so.
I, I don't have any questions, but thanks for the update, Nick. I certainly appreciate it and it's, uh, it has been a busy season. You can't, you can't drive a block without seeing a street that's going to be paved. So we're really doing a lot this summer.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Absolutely, Katie.
So Nick, we're really hoping for curbs on Pleasant Street. Um, we've got people who park right up on the sidewalks because they can. They're not doing it now that the street's been built because the street is lower. But we, um, we're, it's a problem because then people's sidewalks crack and they don't want to keep replacing them. So that's an issue, but once everything's done, it's going to look so beautiful and we really do appreciate it.
Yeah, unfortunately Katie, uh, curbs weren't part of our financial plan this year. But hopefully the asphalt, you know, uh, makes, makes that a little more palatable. Uh, I, we typically only do one street a year. And this year we did floor lab. The curving was pretty suspect over there. Um, I, I wish I could do granite curbs on a lot more streets. But it's, it's not cheap.
I understand, even if they're not granite, I mean, we need some.
Sure. Well, your street, well, the Pleasant Street is supposed to be paved in like a week or two. So, um, I, we can talk about that further, but I, I don't know how we possibly could get curbing. Uh, I, I think I'm going to be pretty close to budget with, with the 15 streets that we have open right now, uh, but we can talk on it further.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Need further questions for Nick. Rick Van Donzel.
Just a quick reminder, uh, Brian, we need to add a couple of items that came in late. Uh, one is the seeker review for Washington and North Green Butch. And the second is a discussion to set a date for a public hearing for the zone change on the corner of River and Port Watson.
Very good. With council's approval, that would be 32 and 33. And then Tom, did you have a hand up?
Oh, I did. Uh, this is another question for Nick. I know, uh, several years back, we experimented with asphalt curving. Did that ever go anywhere, Snack?
Um, no pun intended, but it didn't. It's still in place.
Okay.
I think we, we tried it on a few, um, on a few streets. The other view drive, Brown Ave sticks out to me. Um, and I think one other, uh, some of the residents really liked it, others didn't. Um, but I, I believe it's still, it's still holding up. And it was, it was, I would say more than a, what do you think, seven or eight years ago?
Yeah, thereabouts. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Thanks for the update.
Yep. All right, we're going to move on. Nick, thank you for the update. There's a lot of great work happening. Trying to keep everybody apprised so they can plan their routes to and from work appropriately. Agenda item number two, resolution approve a special event application along with all other required applications for Porch Fest, August 15th, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Motion to consider Kat McCarthy, Second, Jackie Chapman, discussion.
Exciting to see this event. Uh, looking to come back into the ward again this year.
Yep. Good, agreed. And for people who are unfamiliar, a lot of music, neighborhood friendly fun on Van Huseen Street. Uh, there is a map that has been included in terms of potential layout. And having been a couple of years ago, it was a very enjoyable event. And it's a good time, I think, was had by all. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries. And then agenda item number three, resolutions waive the fees for Porch Fest. This includes the amplified sound. Uh, Porch Fest, for those who may not know, concerts on different porches. Motion to consider waiving the fees. Kat McCarthy, Second, Katie Silman, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Brian, it's Amy. I would just like to say thank you on behalf of Molly and to all of you for approving these, um, applications. And I know we are all as neighbors and the committee looking forward to bringing this event back to our little community and bringing some enjoyment finally. So thank you again.
A pleasure. Looking forward to it. And as you heard from Nick, the road will be, the street will be paved by then too. No worries.
Yay.
Much needed. Great work happening. Um, agenda item number four, resolution to approve a special event application and all other required applications for the overdose awareness vigil to be held August 31st from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM in Courthouse Park. Motion to consider John Bennett, Second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. Not sure if we have anybody present this evening to speak to it. This is a new, this is not an annual event, but the idea is to raise awareness of the scourge that drugs are in our community and the negative impact it has on many people, especially loved ones of people who are in the grips. So motion is on the floor. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And agenda item number five, resolution to approve a special event application along with all other required applications for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial fundraiser to be held July 17th from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM in Courthouse Park. Motion to consider Katie Silman, Second, Bruce Titler, discussion. And I believe.
I'm here to discuss on their behalf, Brian.
There you are, Brett. I was looking for you. Thank you.
Yes, um, so the Vietnam Vets 377, um, which is the Finger Lakes chapter, wanted to take the, one of the very first Vietnam Veterans memorials. Actually, it was dedicated in 1968. By the end of the war, had 14 names on it. It was moved from the Padawan Youth Center to the Courthouse Park years ago and really hasn't had much done to it and it is falling apart. So it's been damaged by skateboarders and just weather in general. The eternal flame stopped years ago. Um, and these, these guys, um, my father is in this group and he's one of the young guys at 75. So the, the group is, is essentially, they call themselves terminal. They will be, the Vietnam Veterans of America will stop existing in two to three years, most likely. Um, and they wanted to get this thing fixed up so that it lasts for generations after they're not here. And the idea was to, um, have, you know, fundraiser, a nice day in a park. And with, you know, us kids having, you know, doing music for them over the last few years, the concert idea came up. So, um, we're, want to have a concert in the park to help raise money to repair this Vietnam Veterans Memorial with the 14 names on it. Um, it's looking at around $30,000 to fix. So it's a lot of money to raise. They've gone, they've been out on foot because these guys are old school. They've been out to businesses on foot all over the county to try to get it done. And they're trying to raise as much money inside the county as possible. But, um, we're going to have, um, a food vendor, a local food vendor. We're Craig and Michelle from Coffee Mania have donated, you know, a lot of drink for the day and pastries. Um, but we're going to have a 20 by 40 tent up covering the stage because our current stage does, has no top. Um, and, um, bring in, uh, portageons so that, um, people don't have to leave the park because there are no bathrooms in Courthouse Park. Um, and just make a nice day where we can hopefully get some money donated and people can just enjoy themselves and we can raise awareness for that memorial before these guys are no longer a group anymore. And that's what I've got.
Thank you.
Wonderful for you to help organize. I've had a couple of conversations with one of the other organizers and really think it's the right thing to do and the right way to go about it. Uh, Brett, is there contact information in terms of if somebody wants to make a donation? What's the best way?
Um, the, the 377 has a Facebook page under Vietnam Veterans 377. And we have, um, my son Gino has started a GoFundMe that's going to be linked to that page starting probably tomorrow. Um, it's already linked to my personal stuff. We just got it rolling. But there will be GoFundMe on there and we will also have information on the 377 page about, um, uh, about that, uh, about being able to send checks, et cetera.
Very good. Lying on the 12-year-old. Smart move.
Yeah, 13 now, Brett.
13. Oh, my gosh.
Brett, thank you. Tell your dad thank you.
Will do, John.
Council, discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Very good. Number six, resolution to waive the fees for Vietnam Veterans Memorial fundraiser. I think the big one here is the amplified sound device. Motion to consider John Bennett, Second, Katie Silman, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And it's carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Brett, thank you for being here. Any objections on the election to the school board?
Well, thank you.
Number six, resolution to waive, I gotta cross things up a little bit more quickly. Excuse me. Number seven, resolution approve a special event application along with all other required applications for the reunion of the ages benefit concert to be held July 31st from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Motion to consider. Looking for it. There we go. John Bennett, Second. Jack, oh Jackie, I missed your hand. I'm sorry. But Jackie gets the second. Discussion. This is an event that is back after being out for a couple, for one year. There is a map included. This would be behind the Port Watson Mini Conference Center. Serves as essentially a, we Portland High School alumni event reunion for all ages.
I'm here. I'm part of.
Ah, Rhonda, there you are. How are you?
Good. And you?
Good.
It's a benefit for, um, three, three people that are battling something. So it's also a benefit to help them. We do have bands coming and playing for them to, to proceeds for them. So it's just a get together for them to help them with their medical expenses.
Tom Michaels.
Also, I, uh, also I just learned and Rhonda could, uh, add to this if she wishes. That, uh, they also just, uh, uh, received approval of their liquor permit. Uh, just made of the certificate making it to the mayor's office at this point.
Yep. We're just waiting for that to come into the mail. As soon as that comes, we'll board it on.
Yes. Liability insurance is included in the application. Outstanding. Old hats between Rhonda and Andrew with doing this. Very good.
Absolutely.
Last year.
Talking about your experience doing this, nothing else regarding age. Just experience. Any, any questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And then our next agenda item. Number eight, resolution to waive the fees for reunion for the ages benefit concert. Motion to consider Tom Michaels, Second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Rhonda, thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you guys for doing this.
Well, you know, it's been an evolution these last couple of months. What can and cannot happen in terms of events and, um, 70% today, Governor announced in terms of adults who are eligible receiving the vaccines. So things are going in a positive direction. Number nine, resolution approve the exotic pet permit for five chickens, all hens, located at 216 Main Street. Motion to consider. Tom Michaels. We have support from John Bennett, discussion. In fact, there is a couple of letters of support for neighbors who have. of letters of support for neighbors who have at least signed on saying that they are supportive.
Actually, maybe there's been some last minute changes.
Uh oh.
Since the application came about, they lost one chicken. And they only have the one remaining and she just obtained three more from a, from a rescue farm. One's, one's a rooster, so it's only going to come down to three chickens now and not five.
Three chickens and a barbecue it is.
Yes, and the, actually the one remaining chicken, its name is Rum Steak, so. Pretty fitting, we got in your comment.
Man. You're calling your cow burger.
If I may also add, there's, there's another permit in the wings. I don't know if we can, we can add to, piggyback this one to this one as well? Or should we wait till the next meeting?
If you're ready to bring it forward, after we're done with this one, we can throw that one on the table.
Okay.
Any questions for Tom or anything about the request for the exotic pet permit? And you said it is now three chickens?
Yes.
Not five, but three, I'm going to correct that. So, approve an exotic pet permit for three chickens at 216 Main Street. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Alright. Tom, you have another one?
Yes, we also have another resident on Halbert Street that's also going to be applying for the permit. This individual actually only has two chickens. And the reason I'm more willing to move this forward is that this individual is currently enrolled in the Sustainable Farming Program at TC3, which is well above the criteria for actually owning, owning chickens. It's something that I proposed from the beginning that these individuals that want to raise these birds have some kind of knowledge upfront before they take on the responsibility. And this individual certainly has taken that upon themselves to do that.
Very good. So, motion to consider resolution to approve an exotic pet permit for two chickens on Hubbard Street.
Halbert.
Halbert. Do you have a number?
I can get you one before the end of the meeting.
Number to be determined. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Katie Silman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. They're not scared, they're chickens. Number, we'll call that one 9B. Moving on to number 10, resolution approved street closure on Harrington for graduation party in July 16th from 3:00 to 8:00 PM. Motion to consider. Katie Silman, second. Bruce Titler, discussion. There was concern in terms of parking and I don't know. Katie, Bruce, you're both in that neck of the woods. Any conversation with the applicant and would you be willing to, or shall I reach out, make sure that addressing parking appropriately because that might be a challenge that day?
Is that regarding the guests who are coming?
Yes.
We discussed the ability for people who live on the street to get in and out of their homes and they have managed all of that. They have an empty lot that they have permission to park in on the street. And beyond that, I don't know the plan for parking. So, Bruce, do you?
I had not, no, I know like you can't park on Harrington Street. You know, there's I don't know how many people they're having, you know, that are in the, on the block coming. So, I'm not positive. I mean, I can call if you want me to. I'm sure they'll have some plan. You know, we used to block off Harrington back in the day and have block parties there all the time anyhow. So, this is just sort of returning to what used to happen and just in honor of a graduation.
Well, we can give a call and work through that. There's no concerns from the council members and I'm not concerned. We can...
I'm not sure, man. Are you, are you going to contact them? Do you want me? Do you want Katie? I, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever you guys need so we get the parking thing straightened out? Or you're not worried about it?
I'll give a call.
Okay, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries. And number 11, resolution approved request for subordination of the city mortgage to facilitate a new mortgage on property located at 15 Hamlin per recommendations of City Loan Committee. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Katie Silman, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. I'm going to move along here. Number 12, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and submit a CBG application, New York State OCR seeking funds for an MAP. Authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement with funding source upon award of said grant to the city and undertake any other actions necessary to implement the grant or grant program. Motion to consider. Katie Silman, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And 12 through, just point of information, 12 through 16 are all on one memo from Toma Consultants. So, if anybody is looking, it's all one memo. So, next down would be the Kellogg Road Water. Number 13, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and submit a CBG application to OCR seeking funds for a public infrastructure project on Kellogg Road to replace the public water supply and authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement with a funding source upon award of said grant to the city and undertake any other actions necessary to implement the grant or grant program. Motion to consider. Tom Michaels, second. John Bennett, discussion.
This is actually something that's has been in the works for a while and is badly needed down there. Anyone that's familiar with the area, it's mostly due to the level of the water table that is kind of progressed these, these lines to get to the point where they are today. So, I, I think, I thank Thomas for taking the initiative to make this a priority. And thank you.
Outstanding. Concur. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number 14, resolution authorized mayor to sign and submit a CBG application pursuant to the CBG CARES Act to New York State OCR seeking funds for multiple activities including COVID-related work at City Hall and in the city parks and for a program to assist small businesses impacted by COVID-19 and authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement with funding source upon award of said grant to the city and undertake any other actions necessary to implement the grant or grant program or activities. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Jackie Chapman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. 15, authorizing, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and submit an application under the Main Street Program seeking funds for an anchor grant and to assist in the rehabilitation of the property on Main Street and authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement with a funding source upon award of said grant to the city and undertake any other actions necessary to implement the grant or grant program. Motion to consider. Katie Silman, second. John Bennett, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. 16, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and submit an application to Department of State under the Smart Roof Comprehensive Planning Program seeking funds update the city's comp plan and authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement with funding source upon award of said grant to the city and undertake any other actions necessary to implement the grant or grant program. Motion to consider. Jackie Chapman, second. Katie Silman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And we do have a current comprehensive plan. I believe we're approaching getting close to 10 years old in terms of when it was passed. It might be actually closer to eight years. However, the plan had gathered a little bit of dust, so to speak, before it was passed. Be interesting if you not go back through and take a look at it. It is on the city website because there's a lot of our direction that has come out of our past plan. And we've had a lot of accomplishments based upon what we said as goals and objectives. Number 17, discussion presentation regarding reconstruction of Groton Avenue from Otter Creek to Main Street, how to move forward with contracting engineering firm. So, I have Mike Alteria from BCA Architects and Engineers present. And I'd like to give him an opportunity to speak about what, what is happening. Very quickly, the framework applied for, city applied for, was granted in EPA grants, which was unusual in terms of the size and the scope. And that is a significant portion of part of the Clinton Avenue project. And the idea council approved in the past, the potential expansion to continue similar work on Groton Avenue. The question has come up in terms of how do we move forward with that? There's a significant chunk of money here and I did not want to move forward without talking with council. And whether or not we continue with our current engineers or if we should have discussion and potentially RFP. So, Mike, I see you've got your microphone on. So, when you're ready, you're...
Alright, thank you Mayor Tobin. Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm. Yes, we can.
Thank you for having me. Yes, my name's Mike Alteria at BCA Architects and Engineers. I'm a principal civil engineer there. And I also have going to need today Jeremy Glenn. He's a civil engineer and our director of transportation. We're working with Nick Dolby pretty closely on your Clinton Avenue project. And I'm sure you've all seen that construction out there. And that's moving quite along well. We're also working on some of the other projects in the city, including the South Side Drainage Project and a few other items that you've probably also seen in your travels throughout the city. What I'd like to talk to you today is about Groton Avenue, kind of an extension from Clinton Avenue, but a rather large undertaking in of itself. So, I believe I have the ability to share my screen. We are going to test that ability now.
Not sure I did screenshot. If you tell me which document, I can throw it up this...
Oh, well, that's even better. Then I don't have to worry about screwing it up. Let's, can you pull up the map of the area for the project, Brian?
That's a good question.
Cool.
How are we doing?
Yes. Maybe, can you zoom in a little bit?
Let's get there.
There you go. Okay, so, we're talking the portion of Groton Avenue from where across is Otter Creek all the way to Main Street. And very similarly to Clinton Avenue, this is a complete roadway reconstruction from right-of-way boundary to right-of-way boundary and all utility connections therein. So, we're talking completely redoing your potable water distribution system, your sanitary storm collection systems. And also looking at the other upgrades that are kind of incumbent of that or are part and parcel to the project. All your traffic signals would be upgraded as a part of this project. Entire roadway would be reconstructed from the bottom of the road base all the way up to the top of pavement. New curbing, new sidewalks, new stormwater management features. We will be replacing street lighting intermittently where it's required as a part of the construction. This is a pretty substantial upgrade, especially for the potable water distribution system because this would provide a direct link from where your potable water is produced at your water plant directly to Main Street and of course to Clinton Avenue. So, like I said, it's a pretty substantial undertaking, but it's a complete soup to nuts, brand-new roadway system and new utilities. We, as Mayor Tobin mentioned, we embarked on a fairly new funding effort for you for this and putting together the project. So, what we do at BCA is we develop the project scope with you and then we find out how we're going to fund that. So, one thing that came out of the Clinton Avenue effort and some of the other project efforts going on in the city is we discovered this new loan program offered by the United States EPA. It's the Water Infrastructure Innovation Act Loan, or WIFA. And they offer long-term, low-interest loans that cover water infrastructure. So, potable water distribution, stormwater and sanitary sewer is a part of that. And what Mayor Tobin just brought up is the complete description of that. I won't go through all the details, but it's a, we had to put together a fairly detailed technical description of what we were going to do for the the work as a part of the loan package. One thing I should mention is that this loan package covered several, several project efforts as an umbrella fund. So, we included Clinton Avenue, Groton Avenue and the work associated with utilities on Main Street as a part of this. So, it was quite a comprehensive effort. We were very successful with it. It's the first of its kind in upstate New York. I believe during the time that we were securing this with you for the city, the only other loan that was being secured under this program in New York State was actually in the New York metropolitan area. So, not that you're a guinea pig, but you were the first to successfully secure this. And we use it to build the funding and financing package around the Groton Avenue project. This is a long-term, like I said, low-interest loan. I think we squeaked actually under 1% on the final or right around 1% on the final loan closure. It's a 35-year term. So, very low-cost financing. As a part of this effort, we also found through working on the Clinton Avenue project, we were able to shift dollars over for you. So, we, we were successful with our bids and bidding efforts on the Clinton Avenue project and some of the funding that was associated with the water distribution weren't there, we were able to shift over to Groton Avenue as well. So, and, and kind of summary of the financing package we put together for Groton, it's all completely paid for by this EPA loan as well as a portion of it is that constitutes the water distribution system is paid for by a New York State Grant and Loan Program through their water infrastructure program in New York State. So, when we put together this program, we make sure that all costs are included from construction to grant administration, professional technical services that we would provide and any other foreseen costs such as legal costs, the whole nine yards. And in developing all of the project costs, we actually were able to review and and go under fairly heavy scrutiny with EPA, all of the costs contractually for every single project effort, including Groton Avenue. So, one thing we have before you, for your consideration is our technical services agreement. We're working on this project with you. We see it as a four-year effort. And what Mayor Tobin has just opened is what we have included in our scope of work as a part of this effort for you. And I went through kind of a clip notes version of this, but this is what we would provide you with, with our project effort on it. So, like I said, a complete soup to nuts, new roadway system. Any questions so far before I continue?
Yeah, I have a quick question, Mike.
Sure.
Hey, Mayor, if you could just go back to the others, to the previous slide, I just wanted to know what they meant by side streets included in this project? Is that just because, I know those side streets are all connected to the ground, are you going to be doing work on those streets as well? Is that what, I don't understand what that means.
So, we're anticipating that we will have to go down the side streets a little bit. When we did the environmental review for this, we wanted to make sure that we cast our net wide enough so that if we found a problem, say we foul the water main down, for example, during construction and required a little more attention for you, we weren't leaving that in the ground and then paving over it. So, we want to make sure that we're solving as many problems as we can with this. So, we did anticipate with this that we would have to go down some of these side streets to alleviate problems that are found during design or during construction. To alleviate, uh, problems that are found during design or during construction.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That's what I was wondering.
Sure. We found that during Clinton Avenue too. Um. One thing we worked with you on with, with, uh, some of our services, uh, during Clinton Avenue was. Uh, we were able to ship money around in our contract so that we were able to do additional side streets at very low or no additional cost to the city. Uh, when we, uh, looked at getting some additional grant efforts through this, we would do the same thing for you under our contract for this project.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
You betcha. Any other questions?
Actually, Mike, if I'm correct. This loan from the EPA, I don't know if there's been another municipality in the country. Is our size that's ever, uh, gotten this loan. Have they?
John, you are absolutely correct. Uh, they, they like to say that they would fund communities of your size. But Cortland and, uh, through the efforts of all the folks on this team right here, was able to secure it. So I think it points to you as a city and, and the work that was done for this, uh, loan effort. To show that, uh, yeah, we did good work there to, to secure that. It's not common. It's usually the Los Angeles-sized, uh, municipalities that are getting this loan.
I was gonna say it's generally the major metropolitan cities. And again, too, for the people listening to this. If you take away New York City. I don't think there is another municipality in New York State that is doing the number of capital projects that the city of Cortland is doing. So that is something that should, you know, the people here in the city of Cortland should wake up and notice. Uh, the other thing I'm joke, gonna jokingly say is at one percent. It costs the federal government more to pay their attorneys to do this paperwork than what they're gonna make back on the interest, I'm gonna guess.
I would, I would agree with you there. I think they are upfronting a lot of the finance costs with it, especially for a smaller community. There's a fee for applying. But I think it is a very lucrative loan program for a community. Yeah. Uh, something that, uh, Mayor Tobin has highlighted for us here is the project costs as it stands. The construction costs that we've, uh, come up with so far in our preliminary engineering is around eight million dollars. Uh, contrast that to Clinton Avenue, it's about, uh. Uh, I'd say four-fifths of the size of Clinton Avenue very roughly. And that, again, that's very rough. Some of the utility replacements a little more intensive than Grotton, but that's a fair, uh, comparison. Uh, our costs with how we developed, uh, our technical services, we really had to go under the hairy eyeball, eyeball of, uh, EPA with this. So we had to use those construction costs and also cross-reference, uh, the dollars that were spent on engineering throughout all the other construction efforts in your city. So we had to make sure we were putting appropriate time to this. I would say this is a four-year effort. With at any given time, we will have, uh, half a dozen folks working on this for you. Um, so it, uh, uh, effort of this size is, uh, substantial in the amount of time you spend on it from. Surveying all the way to a construction crew finally putting in, uh, services for you. Uh, and you're seeing that in Clinton Avenue right now. It's quite comprehensive. A little bit painful. Um, it's probably going to be a two-year construction effort, just like, uh, Clinton Avenue is right now. As a comparison, just based on the length and, and the nature of, uh, the project. Luckily, the detouring and other. Uh, maintenance and protection of traffic efforts may be a little less, uh. Uh, rigorous, I guess, as opposed to Clinton Avenue being a main state route. Grotton Avenue is considered a, a touring route that the city owns. So you have a little more jurisdiction over it than, uh, we had on Clinton Avenue. DOT had a little bit of a say with, uh, some of the things we were going to do there. So. Any questions?
All right.
Don't put anybody to sleep. I, I do have to show some members of our design team if I can real quickly. I don't know if I can share. Mayor, if not, I can email them to you later. But, uh, besides, besides, besides Jeremy. Nope, I'm not able to do that. It was kind of a lighthearted joke. I had some of my cats, uh, sitting on some plans earlier today, so I just had to share that with the team today because. They are integral parts of the design team, if, if nothing from a moral, uh, perspective for us. So they keep us going.
I, I just, I hope we can move forward with this. I. That upper, that, uh, that part of, uh, Grotton is, is, is really in need of some improvement and it would just add, add a lot to, you know, people coming to the city from Grotton. And, and coming up, coming Grotton, going east on Grotton into Main Street would be a whole different look than what it is right now. So I hope we can move forward with this. I, I like it.
One thing I did forget to mention, um, all of the projects for this EPA loan, all the project efforts have to be substantially complete and in the ground by twenty twenty-five. I know we say here, uh, twenty twenty-one right now, thinking we have all the time in the world, but. As we all know, as a, a project of this size, that's actually a very little time. Uh, in terms of how much, uh, design effort there is, and then of course, getting out to bid and construction. Unfortunately, it snows in Portland, just like it does everywhere in upstate New York. And unfortunately, that means the construction season is just not as long as we would like it to be. So we want to fit in as much time as we can to get these improvements done for you.
Yeah. I, I would say that, that if anybody cares, my, my opinion of, of BCA is they have my total support as an engineering, for engineering firm. Also, you know, as a project management group, uh, what I like about them, uh. Is they already have institutional knowledge of our systems as the project that's coming down the street, um, flows into this one. Um, to start over, it would, you know, it, it wouldn't be impossible with another engineering firm, but I mean, it, it's highly unlikely. That you're going to get the, the level of knowledge and do you also want, you've got an engineering firm for phase one of the gateway. You've got engineering for. Engineering firm for phase three. You've got a different engineering firm for the DRI. Do we really want to work with another total entity or group, uh, when we're happy with this? Uh, BCA, uh, I, I would say that's totally up to you guys. Um, but if it was up to me, um, I would say if we want to get this done. And fast, uh, we, we hold steady, uh, with, with the BCA group. So the reason why we are. It's the main impetus for this. Uh, one of the main reasons why I wanted to bring this to council, uh, I believe in discussion with Nick Dolby, Superintendent of Public Works. Regarding our procurement policies, we do have the opportunity to continue. Working with BCA. However, this is a sizable contract. This is a sizable project and regarding the fiscal. Security and what's in the best interests of the city with regard to the loan and the money that would be outstanding. I was not comfortable. Moving forward with this without discussion as to what the total cost is and whether or not we should move forward. Or if there should be an RFP put forward in terms of these services. Uh, total dollar amount. Toby, what do you got?
Um, hold on a second. It was included in that narrative. I did find it on there. Um, I think it was nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for engineering.
So when we're talking almost a million dollars, I wanted to make sure the council had the opportunity to weigh in.
Absolutely. That's, that's the, that's the right thing to do.
Eric, can I just add one more thing on the funding side that Mike left out, um, with the Clinton Avenue money?
Do, do me a favor, quickly identify yourself for the general public in terms of what you've been doing and your relationship to the city, please. Make sure everybody knows who you are.
My name is Scott Burdo. I'm with WCP Consultants. I've been working for the city for the past three years, assisting with grant administration and some grant writing. Um, I've been administering the, the grants on, um, Clinton Avenue now. Um, one of the grants for Clinton Avenue, I just wanted to point out, timing-wise, um. The, the water replacement along Clinton Avenue that happened the past two years. Toma Development did a great job getting two years in a row of CDBG funding. So that project was fully funded through CDBG. And the city actually received a, a New York State water grant, um, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, that was not needed for Clinton Avenue, uh, about three hundred thousand of it's being used in this phase of the Clinton Avenue for the, the additional water. But the remaining five hundred thousand dollar grant, we submitted a request to New York State that was originally denied. Um, working with BCNA and, um, Matt Wells at, uh, BSK and, uh, Fiscal Advisors and MAC. Um, we put in a, another request. We explained the importance of Grotton Avenue feeding Clinton Avenue and, and the outcome the same. And we have gotten written permission to shift that remaining grant over to Grotton Avenue. So instead of the city turning back about five hundred thousand dollars in grant funding and another four hundred thousand dollar loan. Um, we have gotten permission to move the money, um, but that again is a timing thing. We have to get the design and the environmental into them, um, to get final approval. But initially we've gotten, uh, written approval to move forward, uh, with shifting the money. So that's money the city's not going to lose and can spend on Grotton Avenue now.
Yeah. So basically after talks with Brian, we really thought it pertinent to give you as much information as we possibly could. A- as a group, uh, as a council, uh, for you guys to, to kind of weigh in on which way you'd like to go. Do you think it. Uh, you know, do you want to put out a request for proposal, um, which unfortunately would take a little bit of time, but we could probably do that. Um, my worry with that, um, would, would be that you're looking at a project. A- after the engineering is complete, there's still a, a big project management element involved. And you're looking at having an engineering firm onboard for what? So the next four years? Um, and, and having that price be stagnant or steady, um, I, I think honestly, in, in my opinion. Y- y- you're not going to know until you are RFP it, but I think that your prices are going to be substantially higher than what they're proposing.
I have a, I have a question, Mayor.
Bruce.
Um, Nick, maybe you can answer this or, or maybe Mike. How much of this, uh, if, if we're able to go through from Grotton, I mean, from Main Street to Otter Creek, which I think is a great, I hope we can pull it off. How much of that money is, is coming from the savings that we're getting on the Clinton Avenue project?
That's a great question. Um, so, um, originally we had closed on a sixteen million dollar kind of a ceiling for the loan for WFI. And right now, because Clinton Avenue came in under budget, um, we're locking in around, uh, nine to ten million. For that loan. So that continues to shrink as we sharpen our pencil and, and bring costs down for you.
So then most of this is already covered by that original loan. Okay. And if we, if we hadn't, if we had known that going into this, then it's conceivable we may have created this as one project instead of two separate projects. And, and Nick, you can answer this question. If we, if we would have done that, would we have used, uh. BCA all the way across if we had been, you know, if we knew we were going to be able to save that money and we had conceived it as one project, wouldn't we be using them to do all this work anyhow?
I'm confident that they, they can do the job on, I, I, I mean, I don't, I want to be totally transparent here. On phase. Three of the gateway, we have two engineering firms. We have Cedarwood, um, and BCA. Uh, Cedarwood did, um, some of the. Uh, underground utility work. BCA did some, some of that and some streetscape stuff. I think BCA's price looks like it reflects. Um, one engineering firm with more, the majority of the work instead of two.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that clarification. Yep. Okay. Thanks.
Bruce, I'm gonna weigh in here if you, if anybody can hear me.
We can hear you.
The whiff alone is just not targeted for Clinton. And with leftovers to Grotton. It is also picking up a lot of the infrastructure on Main Street. As central as part of the DRI. The DRI only covered enough money to probably do the water line. So we are also using the sixteen million dollar whiff alone to cover the two other systems, the storm and the. And the sewer on, and the, and the DRI.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that.
So council, the, uh, question. Do we want to go forward and continue to work with BCA? Do we need to do an RFP, uh? Price things out and see what might come.
I have no problem going with BCI. As we, as we learned last year, and, and especially now is, uh. The country is coming out of what we've been in. Um, prices are going up. Um, we were shocked a year ago with a new estimate for the, um. Shower building over at Wickwire. How much higher that was than what was estimated a short time before then. So engineering costs, construction costs, it's going to be going up. Um, and I would agree with Nick that if we RFP it, something might come in a little bit lower. But there, they are here now and they've been working with the city. So I don't think the amount of difference that would be. Out there with an RFP compared to what they've been doing with us and the time limit, it would be worth it. I'm all, I'm all for going right with them.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with John, especially given. I mean, Mike said it's gotta be done by twenty twenty-five and, you know, that seems like a long ways out, but it really isn't when you're doing something of this magnitude. So I, I agree with you, John.
I do too, for the record.
All right, so. Let me. Put forward a potential resolution, uh. Nick, if you can help me make sure I have the language correct. Resolution to. Consideration of a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a agreement. With Bernier-Carron Associates Engineer and Design, the Grotton Avenue Reconstruction Project from Otter Creek to Main Street in the city of Cortland. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Katie Silman, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries. Very good. Thank you. And Mike, I'm disappointed I didn't get to see a picture of your cats at work, so.
I'll bring them next time. I, I would like to offer a couple things. Uh, we would love to come to you when your meetings are in person and, and present to you on, on construction updates as they go and, and how we're doing on the design. Um, and I would like to thank the council for this. This is tremendous to have this support. Um, not to opine, but very quickly, my great uncle worked on the sanitary sewers laying brick manholes on a Weago Street. Uh, like a hundred years ago and like the turn of the century. Uh, Nick summarily ripped them up last year, but, um, I guess I worked with him on it, so. It's kind of a. I don't know, the, a genealogical endeavor there. When he was living in Towanda, uh, he would commute and stay out in Portland for a month and then. Come back and, and visit with his wife, so.
I, I, I think. I think that investment from a hundred years ago paid off.
Yeah, he did a good, he did a pretty good, uh, job on it. I can't guarantee we'll continue to construct them out of brick. But, uh, we'll, we'll work it into the design for you. How's that?
Well, he set the bar pretty high for you, Mike. It lasted over a hundred years.
That's absolutely. They made them, they made them to last back then. So we will, uh, try to break the record here. How's that?
While we, while we approved you, that means, uh, four-thirty tomorrow morning you start.
Okay, very good. We're on it.
I'd like to take you up on your offer. Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead, Tom.
Did, uh, Nick save you a, a brick, Mike?
I don't know if he did. I should have, uh, requested one of those.
If I had a brick for every time I heard that story, I could have picked.
Once you're done on a Weago Street, you won't hear it anymore.
Hey, Mike, I'd like to take you up on your offer on, uh, keeping us updated as you go through these, you know, you don't have, you know, probably doing short. Updates is better than doing one big long update.
Absolutely. We don't want to bore you and put you to sleep at every council meeting, so we'll do our best to keep you.
So thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. That was agenda item number seventeen. Now agenda item number eighteen is resolution to adopt a city. Very good. That was agenda item number 17. Now agenda item number 18 is resolution to adopt a city press police policy. We had discussed this, I believe it was two meetings back. Whoa, can people read that? So this is a policy that was brought forward for council to consider and we had discussion. And instead of bringing it forward and voting, left it, said, okay, we're going to bring this back. So this was back in May. Any questions? All right, motion to consider. Katie Silman, second, Bruce Tyler, discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries. Thank you. Number 19, resolution allow the city police department to retain civilian for additional help with the reaccreditation process scheduled for this fall, which was hampered by the COVID-19 pandemic and the furlough of records clerk and other duties taking precedence over the reaccreditation process. And this would be to wage not to exceed $25 an hour. Motion to consider. Bruce Tyler, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. And I believe we do have, yes, Police Chief Paul Sandy here to address. Chief, is there anything you'd like to fill council in?
Good evening. I sent you all a package this afternoon. It was unfortunately later than I would have liked to got it to you. It has a proposal from J and D consultants who are familiar with the accreditation process, who believe that they can pull us out of our slump and get us accredited on time. We get accredited every five years and the pandemic certainly put us behind with the furlough of a records clerk. And other things that were going on. So we had one person up there trying to do everything and with the retirement of Chief Catalano and everything else we had going on, we're just behind. I have applied for a extension for three months, which we are hoping we will be granted. But our initial assessment is for October. If we are not given the extension, so we have to push fast and hard. The command staff and record staff are working diligently on our policies. As of today, they just sent out, D C G S just sent out three new standards which must be addressed. Which is a constant issue. We have over 115, 115 policies that have to be touched and gone through. So it is an endeavor and the outside assistance that has nothing other on their plate than to assist us would definitely be a help.
Mayor?
Just looking. Who has their hand up?
Bruce. Yeah, I want to, I favor this and I think it would be very valuable for us to get this, be reaccredited again. And I, and I say this for a couple of reasons. Number one, when we went through a year ago, started the movement to make the reforms as required by the governor on executive order 203, we discovered that many of the issues that came up, we already had policies in place in large part because of accreditation. I see Paul shaking and said, yes, so you know, you remember going through that. So there was a real value to the community. It helped us with that process. And also I've been looking through, you know, what I've been able to, what we've been getting on the treasury departments. And telling us what we can use the American Rescue Plan money for. And I would think this would fit their bill since since this is things we couldn't do because of the pandemic. So I think we might be able to use some of that money to help, help pay for this anyhow. So those are my two thoughts and I, I will vote yes on this.
That was the one piece I was going to ask the chief. Where are we looking to fund this from? Captain McCarthy.
Sorry, that was my question. Is this in the budget?
I think what we also have to ask ourselves, if we do not get this reaccreditation, what is the downfall? We will lose accreditation and have to start from scratch again. Which was a huge process. The reaccreditation will be a much simpler process than starting from scratch again.
Does anybody know how soon we could find out if out of the American Rescue Plan for the municipalities, how soon we would know that we could use some of that money for this?
Oh gosh, it's.
As we continue to wait on clarifications.
Well, you know, they speak in generalities and they talk about categories in terms of what qualifies, but specifically, it would probably take a little bit.
I mean, I know that, you know, a lot of it deals with infrastructures, but as, as Bruce says, it has also mentioned in there certain, certain projects that were not able to be done due to the pandemic. So now, because we had furloughed so many people, I would think maybe this does qualify for that. So that's why it's important to know, because if we can find a way to do this and get this money and use 13,000 for it, then I'm a yes. If not, then I'm a no. I mean, but the situation is, it's kind of needed now.
I'm thinking, John, that if we were to move forward and document everything and it may come to a point where we can get reimbursed for the monies that were spent. I'd be more in favor of doing that and not knowing the outcome of your request.
Well, as I say, whenever, as long as we, I mean, there's an excellent chance that that first portion of it doesn't come in until after I'm even out of office. So I mean, if it's a case to where the council then knows that they have to put 13,000 back into wherever we take this from. Then that's a case to where, you know. Or, you know, might we want to table this even for, until the next meeting?
Excuse me, I don't think we have time to table it. That would be another two weeks. Answers on the money coming from the state, from the feds to the state to us, you know, are probably going to take far beyond that. I do note that Mac has been sending out things that our sales tax to the city have. If I understand correctly through his, his emails have almost doubled of what we anticipated. So there are extra monies coming into the coffer that would certainly cover this. And then they could be replaced when the money does come from the state for the recovery.
Mac? You, Mac? You? Mac? I know you're there, Mac.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Um, yeah, John.
Right now, where could we pull $13,000 from? That's not in the, obviously, you know, Chief Sandy is saying he doesn't have it in his budget.
Your sales tax, as Paul said, is doing remarkably well. Now, remember, we pulled 600,000 out of that growing surplus to make up for the
Yeah, shortfall.
For the laterals that we're not going to do. But I can get, the sales tax will absorb $13,000.
Okay.
You're also going to see a couple line items is that I'm not going to use $18,000 that was previously authorized for consulting in the finance office. So that's, that's coming back. None of that was spent and none of it's going to be spent, but you know, we're doing very well on sales tax at this point.
Chief?
I'm here.
Just out of curiosity, and again, again, too, I'm not saying this out of hindsight, because this past year has been hell with the budget and with furloughs and with everything else, then you just becoming chief. But back toward the end of last year, the beginning of this year, was there talk by any chance between yourself and Chief Catalano about falling behind and doing the work for this?
There were discussions, but as I stated, the city chose to furlough a records clerk, which created some tension and resulted in her resigning or retiring. So we ended up with one person in our records department for the entire year, which was not filled until recently. Shortly before Chief Catalano's retirement. This is, you know, and obviously myself with COVID, you know, I was doing compliance, searching for supplies and doing other things, which distracted me from, from my work on this. And we were dealing with the courts, we were dealing with short staffs. We had a lot of, a lot of things on our plate. So yes, we, we discussed it and trying to get through it with our personnel the best we could. I can assure you, we get this reaccreditation. Things will be put in place. A schedule will be put in place to make sure that there are periodic checks to make sure we are keeping things in line for our next reassessment, which I think takes place every five years.
Well, I would, again, you had mentioned that, so you'd answered the question I was going to ask you how often. As long as I think down the road, even if we, we, you know, because sales tax is there, I would like a future, if it's not until a future council before we get this money. For those of you that might still be on council, I would, I would like this money to be replaced down the road if, if it can be done that way from the first million that we might get. Again, too, because I don't think that's going to be coming in until well after I'm out of office. That's the only thing I'm going to ask. If Mac says we can, it's there, then I'll support this.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Katie Silman.
That was my concern, Chief Sandy, is that if, if it's a report that's done every five years and you know it's coming, that there's a process where you're working on it. And I'm really pleased, excuse me, to hear that you're going to have that in place. So thank you. I will also support this.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, any further questions?
Well, the agenda has to be reworded then. Because the agenda is just doing with hiring a part-time person, maybe at $25 an hour. Nothing about approving $13,000 for a consulting fee.
All right, amendment to the resolution. Resolution allow the police department to retain civilian for additional help with reaccreditation process for this fall. Will continue all the way through at a wage not to exceed $25 an hour. Not to exceed, and chief, was it 13 or was it 13 something?
I'm pulling it.
Let's say not to, not to exceed $14,000.
I think it's 13,300. But if it goes over, it's $25 an hour.
Counsel, are you comfortable with an amount not to exceed $14,000?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yes, friendly, friendly amendment. Do I have a motion for the amendment? Motion to consider the amendment, adding not to exceed 14,000. Katie Silman, Tom Michaels, discussion on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries. And then the full resolution is what is on there with the not to exceed $14,000. Motion, I have a motion is on the floor, does have support. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Paul.
All right, agenda item number 20, resolution, or excuse me, excuse me. Consideration of local law to change the term of office of mayor to four years. So this is something that's been discussed for quite some time on and off. But there are two agenda items, this one and the next, that talks about lengthening the term to four years. If council would go in this direction, then it would go for a referendum this fall. So November, the general public would have the opportunity to vote to decide if it goes from two years to four years. And then that would not commence, the terms would not commence January 1 of '22. It would be two years. So January 1 of 2024. So whatever happens in this fall election cycle would still be a two-year term for the mayor. And then the same rules would apply for agenda item number 21. Which will be the same. Discussion.
I'm happy for it, but I'll vote for it because it's up to the public.
Absolutely. Whichever way they, they choose to go, it would be okay with me.
My only other thought is, Tom, that and again, too, I do know that the county it passed. But that, for the county positions to go four years, I guess it was on the back part of the ballot. And most people never even knew it was there.
You're right, John. Yes.
Yeah, and it was, after it passed, numerous people, I'm sure more than enough who would have been voted down finally spoke out. So if it's on the ballot, I'm just hoping that the people of the city of Corlin realize it's on the ballot and check the ballot completely for it.
Is there a reason why they have to put these on the back of the ballot?
I have no idea. That would be for Tom Brown or somebody else, the, the other election commissioner to speak on.
Tom or Bob?
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to get an answer from them at some point.
But it was not, it was not publicized at all.
Well, not worth having that conversation unless we want to move this forward. Let me ask, resolution to put forward for referendum, a local law to change the term of office of mayor from two years to four years. So do we have support for that as a resolution? Jackie Chapman, second, Katie Silman, discussion.
Yeah, Troy, did you want to say something? I have, I didn't want to cut you off.
No, go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, I, I'm with John and Tom. I would not want to see either one of these jobs be four-year terms, but I've been, I understand both sides very, very well and there's solid arguments and to make for both sides, there's no doubt. But I will, I will vote to put it forward to let the people of Portland decide.
We've had this discussion many times, so. Let's go ahead and vote so we can get it on the ballot for the people to make their decision.
Very good. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Carries. And then number 21, I'm reworking the wording, so we go right into it. Consideration of a resolution to put forward for referendum, a local law to change the term of council person to four years. Motion to consider. Katie Silman, second, Troy back with discussion.
Same thing. Katie said it all. We've been around this 16 different times. Let's just let the people decide.
Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries. Thank you, everyone. Number 22, resolution to declare a surplus office equipment and credenza from the law department. Motion to consider. Katie, second, Troy, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Business large and small. So number 23, resolution accept a bid of $20 for surplus office equipment and same credenza from the law department to a Joseph Hicks. Motion to consider. Katie Silman, Troy back with discussion.
Potatoes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries. And 24, resolution rescind resolution. And 24, resolution rescind, resolution number 59 from 2021, to retain the services of Bonadilla and Company LLP to review the existing account systems and processes and rendered assistance in implementing necessary systems revisions at a cost not to exceed $18,000. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Katie Sullivan, discussion. So this is rescinding a previous resolution passed by council, authorizing the money. So this would pull that back. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And then number 24, resolution amending, resolution 56, allow the hiring of an accountant effective April 1 of '21. This was the resolution, had a salary not to exceed 55,000 a year and changing that amount to $70,000 effective May 1 of 2021. And as a typo, it is 2021. Motion to consider. John Bennett? Tom Michaels? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Troy, in favor or against?
Yes.
Very good. Passes 6-1. Thank you. Number 26, resolution authorize mayor execute a memorandum of agreement County of Portland and other municipalities regarding administration of orders conflicted. Rick, I, I'm not sure we've gotten answers to some of the questions. Are we comfortable asking contingent upon or shall we table? Excuse me, ask council to table.
Uh, have you sent my memorandum over to Paul Hayer?
Believe to Rob, the.
Yeah, I think maybe we should table this. Uh, there's no hurry. You know, this is going to, this is sort of a continuation of what exists now. So that we should wait and see if we get any reaction from the county on some of the proposals that the two of us are making.
All right. So going forward for us to table, we need to first entertain a motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second, John Bennett, discussion. And now can I entertain a motion to table the agenda item? Katie Sullivan, does it have support? Jackie Chapman? And all those in favor of tabling the motion as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we plan to bring this back at the July 6 council meeting. I believe it's July 6, correct? Our next meeting? So we're tabling it until July 6. 27, we have the seeker for the green innovation grant program. Rick Van Donzel, just like the continent, you're up.
Yeah, this is a, a, we received a planning engineering grant relative to the aeration systems upgrade in the wastewater treatment facility. Uh, and as a result of that, we need to do a seeker. Keep in mind that there are two phases to this project that, that will be under consideration. The first phase obviously is uh, the engineering grant to do the planning and, and develop what is needed for the new aeration upgrade. Uh, the second phase obviously will be implementing those engineering suggestions and plans. Uh, I have provided to you a, a, a short EIF. Uh, and the, so you can see part one is just the project information, uh, which sets forth both those phases, the name of the project and how it impacts the area. Uh, the next part is for, uh, the impact assessment and those require me to ask you some questions. Uh, so bear, bear with me. So, as I've said a million times before, uh, the choices for the answers are no or small impact or moderate to large impact. First, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? I recommend no. Anybody disagree?
Yeah, just for the sake of doing through this, Rick, you, why don't you make your recommendation? If anybody disagrees, they can step in. Otherwise, just go through it all.
A, as you can see on there, I've indicated what I think is the answer based upon what the engineers have indicated in this particular phase. So if anybody disagrees as I go through, please jump out.
Rick, I'm sorry, but is this in the email that you just sent?
No, that's a tire, entirely different seeker. This went out with the original packet.
Okay, let me, okay, thanks. I have to dig it up, but go ahead. I'm sorry, don't wait for me.
Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use of intensity of use of land? I recommended no.
No.
Three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? I, I, uh, recommend no.
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? I recommend no.
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 Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? I recommend no.
No.
Six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? I recommend no.
No.
Seven, will the proposed action impact existing, A, public-private water supplies? I recommend no.
No.
B, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? I recommend no.
No.
Eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? I recommend no.
No.
Nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora or fauna? I recommend no.
No.
10, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? I recommend no. 11, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? I recommend no.
No.
Uh, as a result of that, I recommend that you declare yourself lead agency on this project. And that you have determined based upon the information analysis above and any supporting documentation, that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. So two votes, please, Mayor.
All right, two votes?
One, that you declare yourself lead agency. The second one, that this does not have a, does not have a negative impact on the environment.
So, I do have a question.
Tom Michaels.
Uh, can we be assured that, uh, the air quality is not going to be any worse than what it is right now?
This is, the, the plan is to improve the plant uh, and increase the ability to, to, to do that with a new aeration upgraded system.
Rick, would it be helpful for me to comment?
Go ahead.
Uh, this, uh, this plan would only upgrade our existing aeration system in order to, uh, uh, improve the operation of the sequencing batch reactor. Uh, so it would lead to, uh, no additional emissions of any type.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So two, one is to declare ourselves lead agencies, council. Uh, consideration of resolution to consider the city of Portland lead agency in the secret process, motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second, John Bennett, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And then resolution number two, uh, consideration of resolution to declare a negative declaration regarding the secret process. Motion to consider, John Bennett, second, Katie Sullivan, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries. Thank you. Shuffle the papers, next up. Agenda item number 28, discussion regarding older CDBD loans and possible consideration of writing off agent and delinquent loans.
Uh, we had, uh, we had several that, uh, that I've attempted some collection. Uh, and, uh, we had mixed levels of success. Two individuals have restarted their payments after 10 years. Uh, and we've received those payments in, and one person, uh, one that are, uh, paid off the loan. Uh, so in that regard, uh, we had two good newses. There are several that are, uh, still, have some question as to their collectability, but, uh, we'll keep plugging along. I think that, uh, there's no need to write out anything off as what was originally intended. And I think we should, uh, go after them a little longer. Uh, because they involve individuals and their financial circumstances. If anybody has any questions, I would ask that you would do that in an executive session.
Any questions should we ask for an executive session? Tom Michaels, should we go into an executive session or?
Well, I guess, uh, yeah, we, we should, we should.
Now, can I make a recommendation? Uh, we do have an executive session planned to discuss contractual negotiations. So Tom, are you okay with waiting until then and we can discuss and we may have action based upon that discussion?
Absolutely. Yeah.
I don't intend that there be action on this.
Oh.
This particular item, there's nothing to do. Just, I just want to bring it confidentially.
Yeah. Very good. All right. So we'll plan on discussing an executive session. We'll make that part of it. And that brings us to, and reminder, we did expand. We do have two more agenda items, but COVID-19 update, if you did not hear, and I mentioned it earlier, Governor Cuomo today announced that with us achieving a 70% vaccination rate, and I believe that's the first shot for adults who are eligible, uh, New York State is lifting many of the restrictions. I, I believe the word all was used, but let me caution, as many of us who've been around for a little bit may remember, sometimes all doesn't always mean all. And, uh, but the rules, regulations, stipulations with regard to COVID-19 and the restrictions that have been put on businesses and in public gathering spaces are being lifted. So I encourage people still, if you do not feel safe, please feel, continue to feel safe and comfortable wearing a mask to be on the safe side. Uh, I've taken to, not just myself, but with the kids, making sure we're masked if we're going someplace. Doesn't matter if it's the store, someplace in public. Just a good protocol, and I see it as a sign of respect to others that you're still being cautious because I might be vaccinated, but other people may not have the opportunity to. And they might have exposure. And I've taken to asking people, hey, are you comfortable? And now there are still places where even though the governor said the rules are still being dictated by, uh, different entities. So for example, there are other governmental agencies, for example, the judicial branch of government. And the New York State court system will determine, I believe for itself in terms of rules and when, if, and when mask mandate and other restrictions will be lifted. And that does impact us here in City Hall. Uh, the question was asked earlier about a return to in-person meetings. And I'll remind counsel, we, we can do that, except if we are doing it in City Hall, that we need to coordinate with the court system. And as of yesterday, well, as of this morning, we were still wearing masks on the third floor, which is the court, the court's floor. So I am more than happy to reach out and find out from the courts their level of comfort. But as we are going forward, yes, a lot of restrictions have been lifted. But it's okay for us still to be cautious. And for some people who either are unable to get the vaccine or who may not be as effective, it is a sign of respect and care and consideration before taking into account the life experience of others. Questions about COVID-19 and restrictions and where we're at as a community. Very good. So the update, city's portion of the downtown revitalization initiative. Start off with the big announcement. We are not looking to begin construction on Main Street with the DRI until the 2022 construction season. So I'd like to give a specific date, however, depends on the weather, depends on some other things. So we are looking to potentially go out to bid this summer. And we will actually see the big yellow machines that beep when they back up on Main Street doing work. One of the stipulations for us going forward in terms of our contract is that businesses will be 100% accessible throughout the construction period. Uh, we want to see no hours lost in terms of access to businesses as this work is taking place. We understand the strain that this will put on businesses, and that's one of the reasons why, uh, when the question came forward, if we could start this fall, would we? After consultation, we said, well, maybe we wait until next construction season. And that's going to make it a little bit easier for some businesses to bounce back, recover, and for us to, on a timeline, work with our businesses to make sure that we are giving them every opportunity to continue to grow and thrive in downtown Portland. Uh, we will get more in-depth at a future date in terms of what this will entail. But there is, I want to provide a preliminary heads up on one of the projects, the Pocket Park. We're having some issues with an adjacent property owner and permission, or rather, an inability or a lack of desire by the property owner to give access to the right of way. They own the building, they also own the right of way next to the property. And they are not excited about the Pocket Park being adjacent to their property. And we have had numerous conversations. We've explored several alternatives. And the recommendation that is going forward, we have received approval from New York State to potentially convert the Pocket Park project into a stage for musical performances in the Marketplace Mall. So I'm excited to announce that and to potentially speak about that further if anybody from council would like to talk. Uh, but we are exploring the option of having a permanent stage. And this would eliminate six parking spots is the anticipated number of slots that could be lost. But we are going to have conversations about parking during the next year as construction is taking place, well, actually, next two years. And how best to work on parking for long-term solutions as these projects move forward. And then when the projects are done. So we have some conversations in the community that need to take place. But we should, I think we're going to see some real benefit to a permanent stage that will allow for more performances and extend the season in terms of the opportunity. Uh, and it would be covered, which would allow the opportunity for performances to take place, even if there's a potential for inclement weather. Questions regarding where we are currently with the city's portion for the DRI. More information coming, but I wanted to catch up on the latest. Number 31, Tom Michaels, you wanted to talk about some problems you're having with exotic pet permit applications. Tom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to bring everybody up to date as to, uh, some things that are going on. And, uh, and maybe looking for, uh, some, some direction moving forward, uh, my fellow councilmen, persons, I'm sorry. We've had some issues, uh, regarding, uh, snakes that have come up. We had a, we had recently, uh, an application where an individual, uh, had, uh, requested, uh, a permit for 70 rats. And when we, uh, dove into a little bit deeper, uh, ended up getting the SPCA involved. Uh, because they, they had put a halt on, uh, the application. And, uh, I guess my question then was, uh, what's the, what's the purpose of the 70 rats while the individual is going to feed, uh, their, their snake with them? And I said, well, do they have a permit for the snake? Well, no, they don't. I said, wow. I said, we have a problem here. So one, one thing we don't do, uh, as, as a city is we, we track, we track our permits. Uh, if, if an individual doesn't renew their snake application the following year, we don't ask them what happened to the snake or why, why they're not renewing it. Or if they said, well, the snake has died, then we have no proof that, uh, this snake wasn't passed on to somebody else, just because, uh, the individual couldn't take care of it. So we need to, uh, do a better job as to, um, uh, how we track these snakes. Uh, also had another instance where, uh, a family living in an apartment, uh, were about to eat dinner one night and, uh, they had a three-foot, uh, ball python crawl across their, their floor.
Jesus.
And they don't even own the snake. And somehow, uh, they, they found. Uh, somehow it, uh, they, they found out, uh, doing more research that, uh, a previous owner's snake had babies and, uh, some of them got out. So here's this individual, uh, trying to, trying to capture this three-foot snake, uh, before they had dinner. Uh, this is, this is something that's uncalled for. We need to, uh, probably revise our, our, uh, application as to, uh, what we expect from individuals that own, own these exotic snakes. And I also believe that, uh, we should get the SPCA involved. Uh, perhaps giving them permission to be the, uh, the lead agency uh, for, uh, for tracking these, uh, these, these permits. Uh, if we do that, uh, I suspect that, uh, they'll probably want some kind of a fee increase. But before we move any, any further regarding how we want to proceed, I would like to, uh, bring in our, our, our city clerk, uh, SPCA and, and sit down and see, uh, how we can rectify, uh, some of this. We had, uh, we had one individual that, uh, said they had permission from, uh, a neighbor uh, to possess a snake and found out that they, uh, they falsified the, the neighbor's signature. So we got some problems. I wanted to bring them, uh, to the forefront. And, uh, just looking to see, uh, probably some direction from, uh, some of you as to how you want to proceed forward.
I'm gonna give Captain McCarthy first crack at this.
I just wanted to clarify, are the issues solely specific to snakes? Or are there other pets that fall under this category that you feel like we really should be looking at the policy and the process altogether for?
Well, I'm, I'm not too worried about chickens. Uh, they'll either, they'll either eat them or, or bury them. Uh, snakes, I bother me. Uh, and we don't get that many, uh, permits regarding iguanas. Uh, snakes, uh, snakes seem to be the, the, the issue that, uh, comes up every year as to, uh, what happened to the snake that, uh, the previous owner had, uh, the permit for. And, uh, being in the call that just started, uh, I'd like to get an idea of how many, how many snake permits that we do have uh, current in the city. And whether, and follow up to see whether these individuals still own these snakes and what happened to them.
Alright, so I think the request then is for basically counsel to be aware. I don't think we need a formal resolution, but you want to work with the clerk and the clerk's office? And maybe come up, come back to counsel with a potential resolution?
Yes. Yes.
Alright, so counsel, any questions for Tom? Anybody want to be on the snake committee?
Anybody?
I don't have a question, Tom, but I do want to say that it just, this is a problem that hadn't occurred to me. I don't get any exotic pet applications in my world, haven't seemed to. Um, but no, snakes are a big problem in Florida. And I could see how even though our weather, um, makes it such that it's not their natural habitat, if they're sheltering indoors, they could be a big problem here. So that is very concerning and I'm glad that you're taking this up and, um, yeah. Do we have a fine involved if somebody has a permit? I mean, if someone does not have a permit or has falsified their permit and they've got the pet anyway, do we have, is there recourse?
It's, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's funny that you bring that up, Katie. Uh, that was something that was on my list, uh, fines for falsifying documents slash permit. I think, I think we should have something in place. Uh, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what or how large, but uh, we need to make people aware that, uh, there are consequences, uh, regarding uh, some of these issues, uh, without, uh, being honest about them.
I agree.
Um, I believe falsifying business records may fall under that penal law section because they're filing on the government agency.
Good point.
Very good.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if, uh, if Mr. Michaels wants to call me over the next couple of days, I can give him, uh, the ideas that, uh, the former registrar and I have spoken about regarding this. Um, there are laws under the New York State Consolidated Cultural Market Laws that I can talk to you about as well.
Okay.
Outstanding information for the public. That's Ray Parker, who is the city clerk. So Ray and Tom will have a conversation and some of us are looking forward to discussing this again July 6th.
And we, we can do lunch, Ray, Ray, if you're in town.
Always, if you're buying.
Yeah, I'll, I'll buy.
Let me know. I'll come along.
Alright.
Very good. Thank you for bringing that up and thank you for your work on this. You know, the exotic pet permits, for those that don't know, it's, um, basically a responsibility that Tom has been kind enough to shoulder that burden of following up when an exotic pet permit comes in and making sure that it's an appropriate habitat or whatever the creature may be. So thank you for doing this, Tom.
Yeah. Thank you for mentioning it.
Yeah. Uh, we need to set a date for a public hearing. Rick, are we looking at, are, are we going to be ready for a public hearing July 6th? Are we asking counsel to consider? Or am I out of order? Do we need to go through this secret review regarding North Green Bush and Washington first?
Uh, one doesn't have anything to do with the other. So the, uh, the, uh, zone change is for a landlocked piece of property on the corner of a river and Port Watson, uh, that wants, that, uh, the burned area wants to develop. Uh, and we need to consider one of the parcels that, uh, that are sort of interior to that, uh, project. This is the old Berlou shop on the corner, if everybody knows where that is. Uh, so we just need a date. I think July 6th is, uh, is, is more than doable. Uh, the Bury people are, uh, very well prepared and ready to go forward. It's just a public hearing. You won't be asked to vote on anything.
Troy?
I'm not so sure we shouldn't set the public hearing for that yet. This hasn't been met in front of the planning commission yet, has it yet?
Yes, it has.
I disagree with you there, but.
Okay, they were there Monday night, so.
Okay.
But I don't care. You know, you do it whenever you want. We just.
No, I just, I just asked. I was told it wasn't. I'm not arguing. I just.
How about, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for public hearing on July 6th, and if we need to, we do more than one, which would be an overabundance of caution. We've done this before with other public hearings. Gives additional opportunity for feedback.
And the plan, which doesn't even meet till the last Monday of the month.
Um, it was ZBA last night, but they started that process.
Okay, exactly. What, uh, what building are we looking at?
The old Berlou motorcycle place that has a, a car wash right on the corner.
I thought CNY owned that.
They do. They do indeed, but they want to sell it to Burn.
Okay, now.
And Burn wants to buy it.
Okay, now it makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
Alright, so public hearing July 6th. If we need to, we'll throw a second one out there. And then, uh, last formal agenda item before executive session, secret review. And this is regarding North Green Bush and Washington. And once again, Mr. Van Donzel, the floor is yours.
Okay, this is, uh, this is a little bit of a longer one because the project's a little more complicated. You've already done, uh, part one, and that is the review of the, uh, the project itself. This is for North Green Bush and Washington Street. This is now the, uh, review of some of the environmental questions. So again, I will make a recommendation as we go through this. There's only about, uh, oh, I don't, I guess it says 18 questions, but you do have a packet to follow along that I sent, uh, later this afternoon.
Can I just, which, which page do you start on?
Uh, one.
One of the, okay.
One of 10. I think it says.
Part two?
Yep, part two is in the title. Yep. Says full environmental assessment form, part two, identification of potential project impacts. And then it's page one of 10. All set?
Yep.
Okay, number one, impact on land. The proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet. I recommend no. The proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% or greater. I recommend no.
No.
Proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. I recommend no. The proposed action may involve the exhumation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. I recommend no or small impact. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or on multiple phases. No or small impact may occur.
No.
The proposed action may result in increased erosion where from, from fiscal disturbance or vegetation removal, including treatment by herbicides. No or small impact is my recommendation. Proposed action is or may be located in coastal erosion hazard areas. I recommend no or small impact.
No.
Do you identify any other impacts relative to land?
No.
No. Uh, this is a more general question, impact on geological features. Proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. Uh, I recommend a general no.
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 Number three, impacts on surface water. No, uh, several more questions. A proposed action may create a new water body. I recommend no.
No.
The proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over 10% or more of the 10 acre increase or decrease in the surface area of your body bottom of water. I indicate no, no. Proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland. I recommend no.
Oh.
Uh, the proposed action may create turbidity or in a water body, uh, et cetera. I recommend no.
No.
The proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes or withdrawal of water from surface water. I recommend no or small impact.
No.
Proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls or discharge of wastewater to surface water. I recommend no or small impact.
No.
Proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of strong water discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. I recommend no or small impact.
No.
No. Proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies. I recommend no or small impact.
No.
The proposed action may involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water body. Again, no or small impact.
No.
The proposed action may require the construction new or expanding, or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. No or small impact.
No.
Uh, do you, uh, recognize any other impacts relative to water bodies?
No.
Okay, number four, impact on groundwater. Generally speaking, I recommend no for all of those.
No, yeah.
Uh, number five, impact on flooding. Uh, both of these, the proposed action may result in development in a designated floodway. No or small impact.
No.
Proposed action may result in development within a 100-year floodplain. No or small impact.
No.
Proposed action may result in development with five, within a 500-year floodplain. No or small impact.
No.
The proposed action may result in or require modification of existing drainage patterns. No or small impact. No. The proposed action may change floodwater flows that contribute to flooding. No or small impact.
No.
If there is a dam located on the site, it's not applicable. Um, my recommendation is no or small impact.
No.
No. You recognize any other impacts on impact on flooding?
No.
Uh, impact on air, I'm recommending a general no to all of those questions.
Okay, no.
Impact on plants and animals, uh, I am recommending a general no on regard to all of those.
Um, in our document, you have yes.
No, the engineers did. I don't agree.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Uh, number eight, impact on agricultural resources. I recommend a general no.
No.
Okay. Well.
Impact on aesthetic resources. Uh, this general description of this area is the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. Um, A, proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. I recommend no or small impact.
No.
The proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. No or small impact.
No.
See, the proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points, seasonally. Uh, for example, screened by summer foliage, but visible during other seasons. I'm recommending no or small impact on both of those.
No.
The situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is, I recommend no on both of those.
No.
Proposed action may cause a diminished, diminishment of public enjoyment and appreciation of a designated aesthetic resource. I recommend no on both of those.
No.
There are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project. Uh, in this instance, I recommend that you say yes, uh, because it's within one half mile of the Clinton Gateway Project.
Okay, yep. Yes.
Do you recognize any other impacts?
No.
Number 10. Uh, impact on historical or cultural resources. Uh, I disagree with the engineers on this, and I think the answer is no to both of those for this particular project.
Okay.
Any idea, say yes?
I, I don't, uh, I don't have any idea what they're thinking.
Okay.
I, I looked at it twice over and I, and I just don't know what they think is there's no archaeological dis, uh, uh, site that's found or no recreation or historic places. So not sure where they were going, but I'll talk with them about it, but I, I'm recommending no.
Yeah, Todd's tomb is buried there, so I think we're good to go.
Yep. Uh, number 11, impact on open space and recreation. I agree, uh, that no is the answer.
Oh.
Agree. 12, impact on critical environmental areas. There's not any in, in, within the, the area, so I recommend no on that one.
Whoa.
Okay. Uh, impact on transportation, again, no, no impact. No or small impact. It's just temporary in any event. Uh, 14, impact on energy, uh, I recommend no.
Okay, no.
Impact on noise, order, and light, uh, they indicate there might be, uh, an impact, so we need to review that. Uh, the, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. Uh, I recommend no or small impact during construction. The proposed action may result in blasting with 1,500 feet of any residence or hospital. I don't believe that there's any blasting planned, so I recommend no or small impact.
No.
Proposed action may result in routine orders for more than one hour per day. Uh, again, that may happen, but I believe it to be a no or small impact.
Okay, cool.
Uh, proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties. Uh, again, that may happen with the, with the, the, the project and, uh, lighting for directional at night during construction, but again, I recommend a no or small impact.
Small.
The proposed action may result in lighting creating slot, sky glow brighter than existing area conditions. I recommend that there's no or small impact in that regard.
No.
No. Uh, does anybody recognize any other impacts relative to light, noise order or light? Okay.
No.
Uh, number 16, impact on human health. Uh, the engineers are recommending, uh, yes, so we need to review. The proposed action is located with 1,500 feet of a school, hospital, licensed daycare center, group home, nursing home, or retirement community. Um, I don't know that there's any of them exist in that area, so I recommend a no or small impact.
No.
A site of the proposed action is currently undergoing remediation. Uh, I recommend no or small impact.
No.
There's a completed emergency spill remediation or a completed environmental site remediation on adjacent to uh, the site of the proposed action. Again, no or small impact.
No.
Okay, the site of the action is subject to an institutional control limiting the use of the property. Again, uh, no or small impact.
No.
Proposed action may affect institutional control measures that were put in place to ensure that the site remains protective of the environment and human health. Again, no or small impact.
No.
F, the proposed action has adequate control measures in place to ensure that future generation treatment and or disposal hazards will be protective of the environment and in human health. Again, no or small impact.
No.
The proposed action involves construction or modification of a solid waste management facility. The proposed action involves construction or modification of a solid waste management facility, no or small impact.
No.
Proposed action may result in unearthing of solid or hazardous waste. There's no indication of that, uh, in the, uh, titles. Uh, or reviews, so I would recommend no or small impact.
No.
Proposed action may result in increase in the rate of disposal or processing of solid waste. Uh, it will be an improvement of the disposal of such things, um, with the, with the sewer installations. But again, no or small impact, negative impact.
No.
The proposed action may result in excavation or other disturbance within two thousand feet of a site used for the disposal of solid or hazardous waste. I don't believe that to be the case, uh, so I recommend no or small impact.
No.
Proposed action may result in the migration of explosive gases from a landfill. Uh, it's not involved in a landfill, so no or small impact.
No.
The proposed action may result in the release of contaminated leachate from the proposed, from the project site. Uh, that's also always a possibility in this form of construction, but again, there's nothing to indicate anything unusual, so I would recommend a no or small impact may occur.
No.
Uh, number seventeen, uh, I disagree with the engineers and I would recommend a no rather than a yes, that it is consistent with community plans.
Okay, no.
Does anybody disagree? This is, uh, you know, uh, an improvement of a street, making the street similar to the street that exists now, just better. Uh, consistent with community character, again, I don't. Agree with the answer yes, and would propose that nothing is inconsistent with the existing community character with this project.
Oh, okay.
Agree?
No.
Okay, we've already, I think we're all set. Uh, and, uh, I would ask for one resolution that the determination of a signi- significance is a type one action. Uh, uh, in this particular case.
The resolution for council is that it is. Desperate, a part of the resolution that it is a type one action regarding the full environmental assessment form, assessment. For North Green Bush and Washington were replacement. Washington considered. Katie Silman, second, Tom Michaels, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries?
Thank you all, appreciate it. I will get this right out to the engineers.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Council, like to entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for a discussion of a contractual matter and discussion. Of. Uh, privileged information regarding outstanding loans. To, from, from the city, outstanding loans from the city. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Into executive session from Troy, support by Katie Silman. All those in favor of adjourning into executive session, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And I think I have it open. Counsel, we are, attendees, we do not anticipate. Action afterwards. But we'll be back shortly. And we are back. Let me count. Oh, excuse me, let me hit record. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Everybody from council is out with me. Very good. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn from executive session. Oh gosh, who made the motion initially? I did not write it down.
Uh-oh.
Moved by Katie. Second by Troy Beckwith. All those in favor of adjourning from executive session, please say aye.
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 Opposed? We're back in regular session. Uh, council, I do have a request. Consideration of a resolution to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Portland and the S E I U. Regarding the accountant position and responsibilities. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Jackie Chapman, discussion. So very simply put, for the public, this is a newly created position and we're memorializing responsibilities, so we should be all set. All those in favor say aye.
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 Carries, uh, there was, I believe, included. Bills paid in. Uh, the packet or set, excuse me, sent separately, uh, council. Please take time to read and ask, this is a format that you'd like to see, if there's something else. Uh, we want to make sure that we continue to run numbers and other pertinent information by council. And if there's questions, feel free to reach out. Is there any further business to come before the council this evening? You sure, Katie? Alright, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Bruce Titler, second, Katie Silman, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time and your attention this evening. Have a great night and. Celebrate Flag Week in the City of Portland.
Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.